Good evening, everyone. We are going to start the meeting in just a couple of moments. We'll allow a few more chairs to come in. There are a few vacant seats up front if you do want to sit down. Once we get settled, we'll start. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us and for those joining us on YouTube today. We're going to start this evening off with our land acknowledgement statement. We acknowledge that the ground on which we live is the traditional territory of Caldwell First Nation, of the Three Fires Confederacy and the original people of Point Peely and Peely Island and its surrounding lands and waters, and that of the Huron-Wendot and Windot peoples. We recognize and respect the First Nations who are stewards of the land and waters of Turtle Island and who have embraced the stewardship since time immemorial. We would also like to acknowledge the contributions of other nearby First Nation communities and all original peoples across Turtle Island. We will now have a moment of silent reflection followed by the playing of the National Anthem. Okay, we are going to get an adoption of the agenda from September 27th. Do I have a mover? Counselor Renault and seconded by Counselor Rejoice Pagnol, all in favor? That moves. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest?
Yes, item I, number one, Malden Road EA addendum, family business 6380 Malden Road.
Thank you. Clerk will record that. Okay. All right, the mayor's comments for this evening, Mayor Bondi. Oh, the minutes. If we can get adoption of the minutes from what is the date of that one? September 13th. Counselor DeJardley, Counselor Rejoice Pagnol, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, so the mayor comments, Mayor Bondi is away on vacation. Also, last weekend, representatives from LaSalle Police attended a memorial in Ottawa for fallen police officers, including LaSalle's own Constable Robert Carrick. We also had our last outdoor market last weekend at the Civic Centre here, and we just wanted to congratulate all staff for all the hard work this year. We had very successful markets at Town Hall, and we were very lucky. The weather cooperated for each and everyone, so thank you for all your hard work. Okay, so we're going to move on to... We have no presentations and delegations. We're going to go on to a public meeting and/or hearings, and our first thing is the street naming requests for Martin Lane and Trinity subdivisions.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. Before you say it is a request approving or sorry, seeking approval for street names for the Martin Lane and Trinity subdivision. These staff have reviewed the names and locations and are satisfied with the present or the the approved list, and we are available for questions.
Thank you, Counselor Renault.
Thank your worship through you to Alan. Alan, I see one name that I'm concerned with, and that's Mayfair South. Will Mayfair be connecting directly to the other Mayfair? Is there any possibility of that in the future, or is that that seems to be the end of that that road?
Through your worship, yes, it's the intention of the official plan and the the master transportation documents that Mayfair Avenue will continue through. There will be a series of environmental studies which will be necessary to allow it to happen, but because of the amount of time that it will take for that to occur, we felt that it would be appropriate to utilize Mayfair South just as a better way to just to distinguish this portion of Mayfair from the other portion where it exists.
And how long do you think that'll take?
I would not hazard to guess at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, there being none, counsel pleasure. Move to Counselor DeJardley, support Counselor Carrick, all in favor? Moves. Okay, moving on to information items we received, and that's the Malden Road EA addendum. And this evening, we do have delegates here to speak with us. So we have pre-registered delegates, and I think you've all been made aware that you'll each get five minutes to speak. When we ask when you come up to come to the speaker, have a seat, may you say your name and address? The clerk will time it, and we will let you know when your five minutes is up. And we will start with Mr. Pizzoli, if you'd like to join us first. I can come back to you if you want to look for your glasses. Okay, so if we can have Dan up him? Yes, please have a seat there. Just need to hit the button there.
When I applied to do this, I asked if I could have 10 minutes, but I didn't hear anything back. I did like really deep academic research into this. I'm not like some right-wing Trump kook that's just here for conspiracy theories. So can I, it would be okay if I just read what I had?
And we have five minutes, so each person is registered, gets five minutes of time, and just to be fair to each individual who's here this evening.
But if I'm the only one speaking for 10 minutes, well, there's an extra five minutes.
You're not the only one speaking. We have several people registered.
But if I'm the only one speaking for 10 minutes, it's only an extra five minutes.
Then I would have to...
I understand that.
It's five minutes, unfortunately.
What's the point of having these then?
It's five minutes each person, so each, well, everyone gets a chance to speak if you...
Well, can I request and I submit what I wrote, and you guys read, and that counts, and I just go over my main points, like through my conclusion?
Yep.
All right, so who do I hand this to? I can also email you a copy as well. Let's see. Okay.
So if you can just start off with your name and address, and then you can go into your, then your five minutes will start after that, okay?
My name's Dan Upham, and I live at 6880 Machet Road. So I'm just gonna go to the end and read through my points and try to talk on each point. Everything submitted there. And try to stay within my five minutes. Okay, so I call on counsel to stop the Bouffard Road realignment for the following reasons. Number one, it's not necessary. Two, the realignment conflicts with the findings in StanTech's traffic report and Transportation Association of Canada's Geometric Design Guide. So the basically what I'm trying to get at there is there's the findings that are in the traffic report versus what counsel proposed, and then these findings in the traffic report. Now, StanTech was that was that consulting firm hired or architectural firm hired by the city or the town? Okay, so so they find that basically, they said that the Bouffard intersection where the offsets are is had the third highest rates of accident along the Malden Road corridor. Okay, the first would be Sprucewood, the second Normandy. And when you look at that area, you got Orford, Delmar, Sprucewood and Normandy. They're all, they don't fit the regulations of the TAC, which would be for signalized intersections in the spacing of minimum of 400 meters. They're like approximately 150 meters. So what they found was there's just a lot of rear endings. Okay, A, their drivers in LaSalle are crazy, and B, it's happening because there's not a lot of space. At Bouffard at the offset, there's about 100 meters in between. And if the city or the town were to implement a signalized throughway, there would be approximately 500 meters from Riem to Bouffard. From Bouffard to Laurier would be 310. It would not meet the the requirements, okay? And 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 basically, that's where it's coming from. What what StanTech found and what the council's proposing, it doesn't add up. And the council's the one in the town of LaSalle or the people who hired StanTech to do this. It's like they read through the entire report, traffic report, and said, oh, this is great, but when it comes to the Bouffard realignment, nothing. They're like, they just made up, you guys just made up your own stuff. Yeah, okay. Third, there are other options that was satisfied the traffic report findings, the the TAC, Mr. Pizzoli, the residents of Bouffard Road, the residents of the town of LaSalle, and the safety concerns that the town has. So what the TAC recommends, three different options and and a cul-de-sac and a one-way on Bouffard won't work, but the third will. Right turns only, no left turns. Okay, and I put that out, and I present that in my in my form as well, and it would align with what the traffic report says and the TAC wants about the the minimums of of the signalized intersections, and it would and yeah, anyways, like the safety concerns that the the cities, the town's saying that it's it's dangerous. The Bouffard residents would be happy because, you know, it would actually put no left turns. So through the over the center line of Malden in onto Bouffard, it would actually reduce traffic. Council has misrepresented the statistics in StanTech's traffic report to the residents of LaSalle to align with their agenda, okay? So like, they say that it's, I heard the the now acclaimed mayor in the newspaper just say how dangerous and awful the intersection is, and Counselor Renault say how traffic won't go through and it's dangerous. It's it's the numbers show it's not. Okay, when you're looking at rating or ranking a high, a high rate, you're looking at is just rate ranking, the highest rate is one. That's Sprucewood, the second highest ranking is two, that's Normandy. The third highest ranking is three is that's Bouffard, the the offsets at Bouffard, okay? But if you're looking at the actual numbers, the numbers are low, and they're lower than any other towns or cities, really. Like, you know, there's no reason for for a realignment and to allocate all these resources to that when we could be putting it in other places. All right, four, there must be an independent third-party investigation into how the town of LaSalle has handled the realignment since at least 2009. Can I get, so we know that there are letters from Dillon Consulting that were acknowledged that there was an agreement made between the town of LaSalle and Mr. Pizzoli, and I'm not here on his behalf, I don't even know him, I'm just, this is what I read. Okay, I'm an academic, I've got a master's degree, I work, I do all kinds of crazy things. Okay, I'm pretty smart. So and and then there's, there's also the ministry. They're in my document here, there's an email informing the town of LaSalle that there was an agreement, okay? We know there was an agreement, but what did the agreement say? Who knows? We don't know, nobody knows. I asked Mr. Pizzoli, I asked town council, they dodged me like like the plague. Okay, I sent emails and all kinds of other things. And and I didn't get an answer, even just recently, as this weekend. But Mr. Mara confirmed that there was supposed to be an attachment to that document that there was not. And and for some, how did that even happen? And how does counsel move forward on a project that they have no idea even of what it is? They're going off of these documents that that aren't supposed to be there. And and just the process, and I'm not saying what's right or wrong. To me, I don't care. The process is, there was supposed to be an attachment to that document, there wasn't. Why there wasn't and why counsel chose to overlook that is beyond me, it's ridiculous. All right, that it's it's just, it's poor.
Okay.
There needs to be a third-party investigation. Last thing, counsel must be transparent and act in the best interests of the residents that they are supposed to represent. And that the relationship with the between the town of LaSalle and the council and the mayor and everybody else in the residence, it needs to be repaired, and everybody needs to work together to move forward. Everything else is explained in my document.
Thank you very much. Karen Robit? Karen here? Mr. Pizzoli, did you want to go?
First of all, I'd like to submit the petition to the clerk. 600 names on the petition is a copy. Members of council, it is amazing to me the lengths that the council and the administration will go not to honor the town's legal commitment that it was made to me and the Bouffard area residents in 2009. You have attempted to claim that there was no commitment made. This is completely false. The documents are clear to anyone who has read them. A legal commitment was indeed made. As much as you try, there is no denying it. You have attempted to claim that I have not, I am alone in fighting this injustice. This is completely false. There are 600 names on the petition clearly show the community enraged with the council's actions to disrupt their neighborhood. You have attempted to claim that the realignment is for the greater good for and only one person suffering harm. This is completely false. 600 of your citizens are clearly telling you that you are wrong. The entire stretch of Bouffard will most definitely be impacted. Democracy is a funny thing. It relies on truth to work. The falsifying of information throughout the Malden Road EA process and its attempts to disrupt me and the area residents are now exposed for all to see. And yet, your administration continues to put false information in front of you and in front of the community. Your administration claims that more traffic will not be diverted down Bouffard. Does anybody really believe this? Without question, the realignment will divert more traffic down Bouffard. Your administration continues to put forward false notions that increased traffic will not impact the neighborhood. Of course it will. You all know this, that the road will not be safe for the residents, including seniors and the children who live there, and they will pay the price. Your administration, in its infinite wisdom, claims that Bouffard will not become a main arterial throughway through what is now a quiet residential area. Of course it will. You are doing everything in your power to make it so. Realignment and signalization will certainly create a straight run that will make it so much easier for drivers to treat Bouffard as the main road you are claiming it, you are making it. Your administration claims that Bouffard will not extend to your line. Can we trust the town on this? The answer is no, we cannot. You have gone back on your promise not to realign Bouffard. With that track record, we can certainly expect you to go back on your word not to extend Bouffard east through your line to your line. Going back on your word is what you do. The town has already shown that its promises are meaningless. The town has already shown that it will use its power to dismiss anyone who gets in its way. We are all just an inconvenience to you. I am certainly an inconvenience to you. The audacity that I would insist that you keep your promise to me, it seems at this point that you are hell-bent to remove me from my property, where I have lived in peace for 38 years. The realignment will result in my house no longer being a viable home for my family, and all of this based on falsified information. These falsehoods do not in any way justify the towns, the town is doing to me. The petition before you states the residents' wishes very clearly. The signatures were provided willingly by concerned residents. These are many of the same residents who have placed and have maintained stop Bouffard realignment signs on their properties. Some of these residents may have changed their mind afterwards, having heard false information from others. That is their prerogative to do so. I respect their right to decide for themselves. But the truth will win out in the end. My expectation and that of the Bouffard residents remains that this council steps up and does the right thing by stopping the Bouffard realignment now. Rest assured, if that you do not, we will continue the fight to make this right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Donna Vazler. Come on up and have a seat there and give us your name and address, please.
Hey, my name is Donna Vazler. I live at 1685 Bouffard Road. Okay, um, okay, I live at 1685 Bouffard. Let's start, I'm not a public speaker, so bear with me. I would not like to, I don't want to be here because I don't like private, but I but something's being done wrong here, and I think I should speak up here. Okay, when faced with the difficulty situations such as this, it is good to go back and reference what we already know and things we all learned in kindergarten, provide a good base for showing us how to act and how to treat others in all circumstances. The first rule is to share everything. Unfortunately, you have not shared with us. Many of us in our neighborhood were not even aware of the of the happening to Bouffard. We had been kept in the dark until Bouffard realignment was essentially a done deal. It was not until the petition started being circulated that we found out about it. It was up to you to ensure that the residents were properly advised and given the opportunity to participate in consultation of the progress. Um, sure, COVID made it difficult, made it difficult, but you needed to reach out to us and for us to have our input and to make our concerns known. Not everyone is computer literate, and we needed to be more directly considered in this case, particularly since the Bouffard realignment will affect all of us negatively. This leads to the second rule we learned in kindergarten, which is to play fair. We have not played fair, you have not played fair. We did not consider, you did not consider the residents who live along Bouffard. This will not be good for any of us. Seniors and children will especially be at risk at your plan to realign the intersection. You also did not play fair with those residents in '09 to whom you promised that Bouffard Road would not be realigned. Now, now you want to go back on your word to say that this is unfair. It is an understatement. Another rule we learned in kindergarten is to clean up your own mess. We have certainly, you have certainly made a mess of this. The safety of our neighborhood is being put at risk. The community is upset and angry. You and only you are responsible for cleaning up this mess. I urge you not to avoid your responsibilities. And and important rule, we also learned, do not take things that aren't yours. We are taking away, you are taking away the peace of mind and that living in this area we brought to, has brought to us. This will not be shattered. You can say it not, you can say it is not for another 10 years, but that can't, that that can't be hanging over our heads. This is not a peace of mind. We deserve to live in a quiet neighborhood and enjoy every day. Don't take that away from us, it is not yours to take. And what about taking property that does not belong to you? You comment, you commented to not taking Mr. Pelusi's property, yet here you are, taking something that does not belong to you. That is just wrong. You need to look in a mirror and face up to what you are trying to do. Taking something that is not yours to take. This brings us to another rule. Say sorry when you hurt someone. You are causing grief and distress to people you are not supposed, you are, you are representing. We do not deserve this. We are being made out to be the villains here because we simply circulated a petition to show where the community stands. We are not villains. The Bouffard area residents are all owed an apology from you. And finally, the Bouffard residents most likely assured, follow this, following this rule. When when we go out into the world, watch out for traffic, hold hands and stick together. We will stick together. You have now awoken us, and we will no longer be kept in the dark and kept silent by you. We now have a collective voice. If you won't look, look out for us, we will look out for ourselves. We will keep working to make sure you do not ruin our world. We will stick together as we decide, decide which candidates to vote for in the upcoming election. It's really simple. We will vote for the candidates that have our best interests at heart. With our, with a correction, with a correction decision, with a correct decision this evening, those candidates could be you. And I would also like to add, which I didn't get to put in here, there was also a bus, like a city bus, but it was white, that went down our street this afternoon. Is that something that we have to look up, look forward to? To let you know, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Jim Geniak? If you could state your address, please.
Live at 2525 Bouffard. I'm here tonight because I cannot believe that council wants to move forward with this defective plan. It makes no sense. There seems to be no rhyme or reason to realign Bouffard at Malden. Engineers may think it's good on paper, but it goes against everything the town has said it would do. You have spent a lot of money, a lot of money to build Laurier Parkway as a primary road through this area of LaSalle. Now you want to spend even more money to make Bouffard the same as Laurier Parkway. Why? The two roads are practically right next to each other. Again, this makes no sense. Whose bright idea was it to create two main signalized intersections on Malden Road? So close together, surely, this is not sound engineering design. It certainly is not sound planning. Someone needs to step up and put a stop to this. We look to you, our elected officials, to do just that, stop this now. It has already gone way too far. At some point, common sense has to prevail. I've been told that this town is justifying its actions by saying there are too many accidents on Malden near Bouffard. I do not believe this to be true. The residents who live there are saying that it's not true. I understand that the town may have presented the numbers in its reports to make it look like there is an issue there when, in fact, there is not. If the town is so interested in safety at Bouffard, I have a simple solution. Why don't you just cul-de-sac Bouffard east of Malden? This will eliminate traffic at Malden at that location, problem solved. You already built DIOT to connect Bouffard to Laurier Parkway. As they understand it, there will also be a future connection from Bouffard over to Riem, the other main east-west main road that is planned. This will also alleviate the problem where I live between this field and Malden. It is now a thoroughfare with cars racing above the speed limit at all hours of the night and day. The cul-de-sac at Malden will eliminate Bouffard being used as a shortcut for drivers not wanting to use Parkway, Laurier. And remember, Laurier Parkway was built for that purpose, Bouffard was not. With this solution, there is the added benefit of not increasing traffic on Bouffard to the west of Malden. This will address the This will address the serious concerns of residents in that neighborhood. That a realigned Bofart will increase traffic to a great extent. This is a win-win solution for the town and for the area residents. It will also be, it also address the concern that we have in our neighborhood, that Bofart will eventually be extended between disputed and here in line. I appreciate that the town is saying this won't happen, but we all know the town can change its mind. We need to look no further than the town's previous commitment not to realign Bofart at Malden. Where is that commitment now? Exactly. You are ignoring it and hope it goes away. Well, it will not go away. No one forced you to do it. The town did it on its own free will. We, the residents, expect you to honor your commitments. To do otherwise breaks down trust. So how can we trust any, anything you say? How can we trust that you won't extend Bofart to here in line in the future? Quite simply, we can't. So I would suggest that you start rebuilding trust with us, your citizens. A good first step would be to end this debate on the Bofart Road realignment and simply not realign it. I have offered you a solution that will work. It's so obvious that it will work. We look to you, to you, our town council, to provide the leadership needed to approve this solution and to resolve this issue once and for all. The residents have been actively speaking with the candidates running in the upcoming municipal election. There appears to be much support among these candidates to implement a solution that works for both residents and for the town. There are commitments by these candidates to make this right in the future. I look to you, our current council, to make this right now. Thank you.
Okay, and Mark Ream? Please state your address.
Yep. Name is Mark Ream. I live at twenty-five forty-five Bofart Road. About halfway between disputed and Malden. I want to make it clear from the beginning that I'm strongly against this realignment of Bofart at Malden. We who live on this stretch of Bofart have had to deal with external traffic that short circuits through our neighborhood for many, many years. It is an impossible situation that has not been helped either by reducing the signed speed limit or by increased police enforcement. Nothing has worked. Now you want to make matters so much worse by creating a continuous route for Bofart across Malden? This will only attract more external traffic to our neighborhood. It will surely result in increased speeding and will compromise safety even further for the area residents. The road in front of our homes was not designated for high volumes of traffic or for high speeds. It simply cannot safely accommodate additional numbers of vehicles. I have serious concerns with the comments of administration in the report before you this evening. Those comments are not based in reality. Traffic will increase on Bofart without a question. Seems that there is the expectation that we should blindly follow what administration is saying. We will not, as there is much to take issue within what is being said. I am also afraid town has bigger plans to have Bofart become a main artery serving whatever future development is being worked on in the general area. What about the, what about those of us who have made our homes in this area? Do we not matter to you? We should be given every consideration before anything proceeds that affects the way we live in such a dramatic manner. For all these reasons, the Bofart realignment cannot proceed. I do not want this and I am confident in saying that my neighbors do not want this either. Sadly, we do not feel we are being heard. It is common belief that we can't fight City Hall. The failure by the town to address our issues serves to reinforce, reinforce this belief. I have heard it said that those of us in the middle of the situation must be prepared to suffer for the greater good of the community as a whole. I reject that thinking completely. There are ways to meet conflicting needs. We just have to be willing and committed to doing so. Unfortunately, I'm not seeing the town has any interest in doing anything about our concerns. The greater good of the community is that Bofart not be realigned. Other streets have been designated to move vehicles efficiently, specifically Lory Parkway and Ream Road. With that said, I fully expect that we will be dismissed this evening and you will proceed with whatever means you may wish have to push the realignment through. In closing, I want to say that I'm thankful that a group of residents has taken upon themselves to educate the community as to what is going on and to bring attention of our concerns against the realignment of, uh, to town council. We'll use this knowledge when deciding how to cast our votes in the election. We are most appreciative of their efforts on our behalf. We commend them for taking the time to allow all of our voices to be heard through the petition you are considering this evening. They're all a credit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to turn it over to administration, Mr. Mara.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight's, uh, tonight's report in front of you is a petition that was submitted to the town as part of the Malden Road environmental assessment. As exhibit one to the, uh, to this report is a copy of the petition that we received by email back in November fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. So certainly with respect to that petition, uh, that has been in response to a previous council decision back from September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. In essence, the petition is requesting that council rescind the decision that they made in September, in September of twenty twenty-one. It's important to note that that decision that was made in September was the finalization of the Malden Road EA. It also allowed the town to finalize the, uh, the notice of study completion, the, the appropriate means to finalize in an environmental assessment process. As such, uh, council, uh, through that, through that recommendation, administration and StanTech completed the, uh, the study and opened the, uh, the request up for the thirty-day review period. So this petition came in as part of that thirty-day review period. It was submitted, uh, two parts were submitted. There was a letter submitted with a, with a number of concerns that have been addressed, uh, included in that particular submission. This petition was part of it. In addition to that, the, that November fifteenth submission to the town, there was a November fifteenth submission to the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks. Uh, I'll refer to that as MECP going forward, asking for the MECP to, to intervene into this means. We have subsequently received a notification from the Ministry of Conservation, Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, that they have concurred with the processes that were completed as part of the EA Act and, and specifically, um, with respect to the items that were challenged through the, um, ministry's intervention request was a, a number of things. There was three points in particular that were brought forward as part of the MECP order request. Uh, the first one was that the addendum process was flawed based on not, not adhering to what was agreed to or the decisions that were made in two thousand and nine. And MECP has, has advised and, and I can read specific, ministry has determined that the proponent, which is the town, has met the requirements of the addendum process under the class EA. To make changes to a previously approved EA, you have to go through an addendum process. And the then the process follows the same process as the original EA. And that is in essence what the town has done through this process. The second item that was being challenged through the, uh, through the MECP was the traffic analysis. The current, the current counts and the future traffic projections, uh, were flawed and fabricated. So I will, I will respond to that question. So that went to the MECP and they concluded sufficient consideration of how updated traffic projections based on the transportation master plan completed in twenty twenty warrants signalization and therefore realignment of the intersection. Though that is verbatim from the Ministry of the Environment's response. The third item that was, uh, that was challenged was the lack of public consultation. Uh, and that was submitted through to the ministry as the evidence through the petition and the notice of how many people signed the petition. Through that, through that response from the ministry, uh, they accordingly, uh, agreed that ministry has concluded that the project has met the requirements of the class EA process. So we, we have done everything we could possibly do in terms of advising and bringing, bringing this, uh, public consultation forward. There were a number of things that we went above and beyond with respect to, uh, to advising the public. We had the variable message boards. We had a number of, of electronic boards out on, on Malden Road at both ends, the, the south and north end of Malden Road advising to visit the website. Uh, so there was a number of those, uh, so those who don't have access to computers certainly would read the sign and then could, could follow up with, with the town or visit the website or things of that nature. So with, with that, with that respect, the, uh, the notion of the MECP challenge or order request has been dismissed by the ministry. Therefore, this is really the final, the final hurdle to cross for finalizing the EA, which is the petition. So certainly, uh, the report is, is set before you tonight that we're recommending that the petition be received. Should council wish to act upon the petition, uh, that would be a reconsideration request because it is a reconsideration of a previous decision. Uh, there has been a number of processes that have been completed since that, that decision. Uh, and it would in essence make a lot of that, those processes obsolete. We would in essence have a final approved environmental assessment without council support. And, and that would put us into uncharted territory. So we would, we would recommend that the petition tonight be received, uh, but certainly at the will of council if they wish to reconsider. Ms. Astral, Astralical can provide you with a bit of a description of what is required for a reconsideration motion. Should a reconsideration motion be, be provided, uh, administration would recommend that any decisions on that motion, once it's reconsidered, be deferred until further report can come forward from administration outlining where we go and how we do it. Um, because at, at some point in time, improvements to Malden Road have been a priority of council and have been a priority of this, of this, of this town for a number of years. And we can't do any improvements or any widening until a approved final environmental assessment document is in place. Again, that is the process to follow. It's a proponent-driven process, which means the town drives the process and we follow the legislation to meeting those requirements. And the appropriate challenges are done through the Ministry of the Environment and things of that nature. They, they are the, they are the overseer of that, that type of process. So with that, I'm available for any questions. Madam Clerk, if you wish to explain what the reconsideration process might be for this.
I, um, I think first we have to receive the petition, correct? Before we go into a possible reconsideration?
Sure.
Okay, so members of council, the first thing we're going to do is before you, there's a recommendation to receive the petition. If we can get a mover and a second to receive it, if you want to speak on the petition, you can, but not on the EA at this time. Any, anyone want to speak on the petition itself? If not, motion to receive? Counsel Renault, supported by Counsel Riccio Spaniolo, all in favor to receive the petition? Okay. So now we'll have the clerk explain that if we wanted to act upon the petition, how we would do reconsideration. Um, and just again to clarify what Mr. Mara stated is the EA was already approved. So this would be a chance for us to reconsider it and go back. So that's why we're looking at this part.
Thank you. Okay, so if council wishes to move forward with a reconsideration, because a decision has already been made to approve, um, the EA addendum report, um, a reconsideration can only be moved by somebody who voted in favor of that original decision. And that information is outlined in, um, our deputy CAO's report. So voting in favor of that motion, um, at the September twenty-eighth meeting of this year was Deputy Mayor Malash, Counselor Renault, um, and Counselor Riccio Spaniolo, um, and, uh, Mayor Bondi. Uh, Mayor Bondi is not here, um, tonight, so he wouldn't be able to obviously make that motion. The motion, you could have discussion on the motion, but that discussion on the motion for reconsideration is going to be limited to the subject of reconsideration itself, not the substance of the motion that could subsequently be reconsidered. The motion has to be adopted by a two-thirds, uh, vote of council, which means four members sitting at the table tonight would have to vote in favor of a reconsideration. Once the reconsideration, if a reconsideration, um, is adopted by council, the next order of business would be to reconsider the original motion that was put before council. And as our deputy mayor, uh, deputy CAO has, um, requested, he has requested that the matter be referred so that council can, um, referred back to administration so that council can be given the full particulars of the implications. If council adopt, if council approved the, decided to go against the original motion that was, um, adopted at that time and move in a different direction. Are there any questions at this time on the process? Okay.
Okay, so at this time, is there a motion to reconsider the Malden Row EA addendum that was approved September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one? There's no motion? Okay, so with no motion, um, that is everything for this item for this evening. Okay.
Thank you. This item unfortunately is over and we will be moving on with the agenda. Okay, so we're moving on to item number two, which is correspondence. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. Sir, this isn't how we conduct the meetings. Thank you, sir. We are going to do a five-minute recess. Counsel, if you can leave the, resume in five minutes.
Counsel, if you can leave the, resume in five minutes. Okay, we're going to resume the meeting and we're moving on to information items received correspondence from the town of Kingsville. Members of council, any discussion on it? That's fair.
Thank you, worship. So I guess through to administration. Apparently was stated by the premier that this could affect smaller municipalities down the road. Is that the case? Would we hear anything different? Just a question.
At this point, the, the provincial government has only, only allowed the city of Toronto, city of Ottawa to participate in this particular legislation. That's how it's written at this point. They have indicated through some of their press releases that they expect that it may apply to other municipalities within the province. We haven't heard anything with respect to what levels, to what degree it will be applied. But there is an expectation that it will apply to more municipalities than just the city of Toronto and the city of, of Otto. We're just not sure how far they, they will go with that.
Okay, thank you for that. So I would make a motion that we support this motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to support by Counsel Care, a motion by Counsel Care can supported by Counsel Dejarly. Did you have any question? No, okay, all in favor? Item three, summary reports to council. There's three items. Motion to receive. Counsel Renault, supported by Counsel Acapada, all in favor? Okay. Next item is bylaws. There are four to be considered. Do I have a mover? All three readings, Counsel Dejarly and supported by Counsel Acapada, all in favor? Okay. All in favor of that one? Okay. Any committee matters? Counsel Acapada?
Thank you, worship. Just to bring everyone up to speed from the Remembrance Day Committee. As we know, Remembrance Day is coming. It's going to be the first time that the Essex and Kent Scottish Regiment is on parade in the South. The 80th celebration of Remembrance Day since the UP. The regiment will be here, members of Veterans Affairs will be here, and it will look decidedly different. We're privileged to have the Essex and Kent Scottish Regiment here, so I'd hope that everyone would come out. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, anyone else? Questions and statements by council members? Counsel Renault?
Thank you, worship. I have two questions of administration tonight. First of all, with all the excitement of the Maldon Road EA talks and addendum, I've had a lot of conversations in the last week. And I've actually had three members of the community have reached out to me with the exact same concern. And they feel that the lights at this end of, of Maldon Road may have lost their timing, may have be, may have changed their, their original, maybe changed from their original in purpose when we had them timed three years ago. A lot of people are frustrated with hitting all three lights at certain times of the day. What I'm wondering is, is I realized last time we paid a fair amount of money to have those lights timed. Is there anything we can do in-house with our own equipment? To get an idea if those traffic counts at certain times of the day are still relevant today? Is there anything we can look at? Because we do realize that the, the EA process is going to take us many years down the road. Is there anything that can be looked at for those timings in the, in the short term? That's my first question.
Thank you, I'll, I'll take this one. I, I had a, I had a conversation with a member of the public about the timing. I witnessed it firsthand as well myself in the morning, headed northbound, catching all the lights. And the way, the way the, the signals are timed is it gives priority in the morning to northbound Maldon traffic. And in the afternoon, it gives priority to southbound traffic on Maldon Road. The unfortunate part is that when you have the intersections, it's on demand for the side streets. So if you get a stray car every so often coming down the side streets, we have to allow them to move out, out of the, make the left hand turn particularly is the left hand turns at the side streets. What I, what I noticed in the morning is that there are, there is a larger demand now on the side streets with some of the development that has been occurring. With respect to the synchronization, that is a specialized program. We do not have in-house specialties for traffic signal work and even working on traffic signals. It's all contracted out. With respect to the actual synchronizing and running it through the program. Again, that is really a specialty matter. And we don't really have a traffic department division here at the town. So we, we would certainly go back out to the consultant to revisit it. As you get into synchronizations, they do have to be revisited probably on a five, three to five year rotational basis. So we're probably at that time to do a, to do a revisit of it. In addition to that, we're getting more demand for additional buildup of the town center. And we have a number of overall comprehensive traffic studies that are done to help us navigate through that. And, and there's a bit of a lag from the time buildings are built when people are living there and the demand on the side street. So we're probably at a point where we will approach the consultant to review the current traffic counts and certainly get back to adjusting what that programming might be with respect to the synchronization. That's not something that we have to wait for any Maldon Road EA. These are existing lights that we would go through and do that. And we'll have to put it on our radar for, for either an every two year analysis or an every three year analysis to make sure that it stays current and active. So we're at that three year stage now and we've heard some concerns and we're witnessing it. Up until, up until this year, we really didn't hear anything and it seemed to be working well. Pandemic, less traffic on the road, we didn't hear much. So now, now we're getting back to some of the traffic demand, so that, that will be occurring shortly.
Thank you, Peter. I, I respect that answer and I'm glad that it's already on your radar. And I look forward to something coming back to council on that. My second question, and I don't need a response on it right now, but if this would be directed more towards, towards bylaw. And that is in regards to a request. A few years ago, we were having problems with coyotes. And in, in that process that we went through, we asked for two bylaws to be revisited, one being the height of fences. Because coyotes need to, need a fence of over six feet, over two meters actually. So it was nice to see that after the process went through the committee and everything, we did raise those, those limits to help keep the coyotes out. The other thing that was asked for at the time and, and I'm not sure, may have gone by the wayside, is the question about hard sided containers. We have other municipalities that have, that have bylaws about them. And I've had two residents, one in the last week, that has reached out to me and said, hey, have we ever considered that? I said, I'm not quite sure where it went with the committee. So if we could just look into that and then report back to, to council at a future date, that would be fine. As to where we have gone with that. Thank you.
Did you want to put that into a motion?
Oh. Sure, I would like to make a motion that we have a report to update us on the progression of creating a hard sided container bylaw.
And a second here? Counsel Acapada? And all favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Dejarly?
Thank you, through you too, I think probably Jonathan. I've had a couple of people ask me about sidewalks. And I know we talk about them at budget times. And usually I can find a list of where we are with, with sidewalks and where we're, where we're doing sidewalks and what the schedule is. Do we have a current copy that you can share with us, please?
So, so our sidewalk and our trails that we, we've typically gotten, it was $500,000 we, we get annually for pedestrian active transportation. It's, the list is within our active transportation policy, which is on the website. But currently, the next set of projects is some, a trail network that follows, part of, most of it follows the hydro corridor to, to connect that gap and a couple of other trail gaps in naturalized areas. So we're currently using, we're going through the permitting process with the MECP to be able to do the work on those. So we've been not doing construction for the last year and a half, two years on any active transportation, but those are the next ones we want to work on. And they come in at a bit of, bit higher cost than what 500,000 would be anyway. So in a way, we're saving up, saving up for a couple of years. And then when it's time to build them, we'll, we'll spend it at that point. So that is the next set. And otherwise it's, any sidewalks is just sidewalks that come as a result of new development. Yeah.
Counsel Acapada?
Thank you, worship. Through you to Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess, I had a, just wanted to get some clarification on a noise complaint that came from a resident. The complaint is about machinery that's used through the regular conduct of business in a residential area. I, I just want to make sure that I understand how our bylaw addresses it and how we can help the resident or what we're able to do with a noise that's coming from a machine that's currently required for them, for their neighbors in their neighbor's property, sir.
Through you, your worship. Our current noise bylaw does not have noise limits as far as decibel levels. As we do not have the, the expertise or do we have the equipment to monitor that? We utilize basically a manner of looking at the various devices. For instance, air conditioning units, pool pumps and whatnot as being normal common noise which occurs within a neighborhood. And we basically utilize that as our limits. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you, your worship.
Any other member of council have questions or statements? Counsel Riccio Spagnolo?
Thank you, through you. Just wanted to acknowledge and thank administration as well as the South Police for attending our Canadian Mental Health Association's bench unveiling. So CMHA was successful in receiving a grant for healthy communities. So we put our heads together and thought of an idea that we can promote and do something in each municipality. So we have been unveiling benches last weekend, this week in each municipality. Ours is located on Normandy Street, right across from the Centipath. It's a blue bench. The great thing about the bench is it has a QR code that you could scan. It's a place that you can connect, a place that you can gather and talk, or just a place to reflect. And there's a QR code that will connect you right to CMHA resources or the crisis line. So I thank the town for making a stance on mental health and on behalf of CMHA and myself, we do thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Renault?
Thank you, worship. This, this question is, I'll put it to Patty. It's, it's about the event center. As we have received some information that the town is soon going to be moving into the event center. And I personally have anxiety because I just can't wait to get in there and start seeing what we're going to do with this space. I'm just wondering, I, I realize that we have our first event we're working on. I'm just wondering what, what we should expect of what you need to do in the next, say, month to get comfortable in there and to what you need to move in. And before we can start seeing some activity down there, a lot of people, I've been telling, whether they like pancakes or not, I tell them they, they really need to like pancakes and be nosy and come check it out. I'm really excited for, for the town. And I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to get something to cool my jets a little bit. Just put me back on track and let me know what has to happen before we just open the floodgates.
Certainly, thank you for the question, Counsel Renault. From a culture wreck perspective, I can certainly answer that. I think there's some other departments, IT certainly for one, as well as Public Works that will have quite a bit of work to do as well before we can get operating events and whatnot in the event center. You're correct, we are planning for the Santa breakfast to sort of be one of the first events and then continue to operate additional events throughout December. We will need to do, you know, certainly staff training. We're going to need to get in the facility, get our staff situated and understand, you know, where the doors are and, you know, what this light switch works for and all those sorts of things. So we will need some time. We don't, to my knowledge, have an exact date that we'll be moving in now as of, as of yet. So assuming it's in the next few weeks, that would only give us, you know, a month or so before we're looking at getting ready for our first event. So the Santa breakfast is still what we're working towards.
Okay.
Counsel Riccio Spagnolo? If you want to hold on one second, Mr. Mara wants to follow up on that.
Thank you. Just before all the exciting stuff that Patty talks about, really, we need to get the contractor, contractor out of the, out of the building. They are making good headway. The, the last 10% is 90% of the work in construction. And so that is currently what they're working on. Once we get them, get the contractor and take over the site ourselves. As, as Ms. Fenero had mentioned, there's the whole IT side of things, the whole office furniture side of things that we need to get in hand. We have to work with fire and police to work on emergency plans and all of those things to have proper locations for evacuation and how to evacuate and all that type of stuff in, in the event of an emergency. So we continue to push the contractor to, to getting it done. But again, we, we are just waiting shortly to get some of those final touches done. Some of the aspects of the building won't be available because there are a number of inspections that need to occur. And some of those authorities that do those inspections are out on strike right now. For example, we can't get the elevators inspected because TSSA is on strike. They are doing, only doing priority items right now. So a hospital or things of that nature where they need those inspections done. That's all they're doing right now with the priority essential inspections. So anything new, they're not really doing. So we're in a bit of a, we're in a bit of a catch situation here and, and we continue to work with the contractor to get them out. But certainly within the next week or two, that should be completed shortly. And then the, the fun starts for us to outfit it and, and put all those good features in there.
Thank you to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, just a question to piggyback on Counsel Renault's question. Myself, I would like to host a couple of events there next year. And I know obviously right now the event center is not available. However, I did have a couple of inquiries. Is there tours available just so we can see? I can bring committees to come and check out the venue, just so we can lock in a date for spring or fall of 2023? As well as is there contracts available that we can just start signing off again for 2023? Just so then, if the event center isn't available, we can move forward to it with another venue.
Thank you for the question. We are, we'll be conducting an expression of interest as we discussed back, I believe it was in April, when I brought a report forward to council. We're hoping to do that in the coming weeks. We do want to be able to conduct tours so that folks know what they're, you know, expressing interest on. However, while it's still a, under construction and a construction site, we cannot bring members of the public in there. So as soon as we have those, you know, a confirmed date from the contractor that we will have access to the building, we intend to express that, or sorry, release that expression of interest so that we can start to gather information. And at that time, we'll have all the further details in terms of a contract and what dates are available and what the amenities are, capacities, all those sorts of things.
Okay, any notices of motion? We didn't have a closed session this evening, confirmatory bylaw? All three readings, Counsel Acapada, Counsel Care, all in favor? Below you have the meetings for October and November, and you went in for December. There we go. And that's everything tonight. Thank you for joining us in person and on YouTube.